...
...
Where do you go?
Good evening and welcome to the February 12th, 2018 Valley View School District Board Meeting. Mr. Beduris, would you lead us in the pledge?
For the allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Ms. Perel, could you please read the affirmation of the Board of the Education Mission Statement and the Board Beliefs?
Our mission is to empower all learners to be college and career-ready and to develop, grow, and achieve as productive citizens.
Thank you. Dr. Mitchum, the agenda, please.
Yes, Mr. Zach, I'd like to ask that the Board approve the agenda as amended. I'd like to make a motion to table Action Report 12.1.
Second.
Others in favor? Roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Zack?
Yes.
Mr. Grizziapi, the Treasurers' report, please.
Yes, Treasurers' report for January 2018 includes our financials, balance sheets, and summary of revenue expenditures, as well as the interim obligation payments for January 2018 totaling $4,510,670.31 for your consideration and action.
Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell? Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Zack?
Yes.
Schedule of Bills for February 2018 represents six funds totaling $1,989,556.58, also for your consideration and action.
So moved. Second.
Any questions or discussion? Hearing none, seeing none. Roll call vote, please.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Pro Tem Zack?
Yes.
As is typical, we've got information reports, including the summary of investments, state funding update through January, as well as the school trust account activity through December. Any questions you may have, we'd be happy to answer them.
Some questions? Okay. Consent agenda items, Dr. Mitchum?
Yes, Mr. Zach, I'd like to ask that the Board approve Consent Agenda Items 6-1 through 6-4. 6-1 Board Meeting Minutes on January 22nd, 2018. 6-2 Executive Session Meeting Minutes on January 22nd, 2018. 6-3 Gifts for Beverly Skoff Elementary School, Irene King Elementary School, Tibbet Elementary School, and Romeoville High School. And 6-4 Trips for Romeoville High School.
So moved.
Any discussion or questions?
Could I ask where Romeoville High School's going for the DECA? It didn't give a place, it just gave two days. Chicago, thank you very much.
Yes, they're staying at the Hyatt Regency O'Hare. It's at the Hyatt Regency O'Hare.
Okay, can I have a roll call vote, please?
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Perel?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
Vice President Pro Tem Zack?
Yes.
Okay. Students and Staff Recognition: Pillars of Valley View, the Bolingbrook High School. Dr. Pescagius.
I'd like to invite Angie Beam and Kelsey Fletcher-Brochek to come up, please. Good evening, members of the Board, Senior Leadership Community. My name is Kira Mokon. I am the Enrichment Administrator at Bolingbrook and Romeoville High Schools, and I will be recognizing our pillars this evening. So although nearly 10% of our staff was nominated for this award, it is my distinct pleasure this evening to be able to present Angie Beam and Kelsey Fletcher-Brochek as two pillars of Valley View on behalf of VHS. I'm extremely proud as I've worked, I've had the pleasure of working closely with both of these world language educators since the beginning of their employment and VVSD. In addition to being from the same department, Angie and Kelsey also share another special relationship. Although it was nearly a decade ago, it seems like just yesterday, Kelsey was Angie's student teacher. First, let me share with you about Kelsey Fletcher-Brochek. Kelsey is a phenomenal Spanish teacher and colleague who exhibits superior content knowledge and proficiency in the Spanish language, possesses a wealth of experience in curriculum development, and timelessly invests her time, energy, and talents in enriching the school community. Kelsey has positively contributed to the World Languages Department by serving as a leader in curriculum and assessment development. Her classroom is a vibrant and relevant place with activities that engage students by relating to their interests, emphasizing rural communication, and providing ample opportunities for skill mastery. Another strength of Kelsey's is technology. She finds creative ways to engage students using technology on nearly a daily basis, and she is always patient and helpful with colleagues when learning new technology. She assists all staff in her role as tech coach, but truly shines within the department by sparking interest in a plethora of tech tools that are seen regularly in classrooms of nearly 20 world languages teachers in the district. She also makes a significant contribution to the profession of language teaching as she has presented at several regional and national conferences in the past two years. Kelsey also enriches the school community and builds positive rapport with students and staff in a number of ways. She regularly attends school functions, volunteers with the music program, and sponsors a modern dance club. She also finds creative ways to discuss students' successes in her classroom. For example, she has a bulletin board that she updates every time a student gets accepted to and commits to a college or university. She's active in planning outside enrichment activities for students such as field trips to Costa Rica and is also a co-founder of the first-ever National World Languages Honor Society that currently has a membership of 125 students. Kelsey is a quiet leader who never seeks recognition. In fact, she's probably quite embarrassed right now. However, I am thrilled to be able to recognize her as she embodies our school values and truly honors the Raiders on a daily basis. Kelsey, your contributions to our student body and district make you a pillar of Valley View. Congratulations. So next, I'd like to recognize Angie Beam. Currently serving as Spanish teacher, World Languages Department Chair, and Building Reflective Coach, from her titles alone, it's no surprise we are recognizing Angie this evening. However, these titles only scratch the surface for why she is so deserving of this award. Nearly 20 of her colleagues nominated her for, hurt, excuse me, nominated her for this award. It's clear that her talents are hard to hide. Whether it be baking cookies for her department, buying alarm clocks or coats for her students, or visiting a cleaning staff member in their home after heart surgery, Angie is truly representative of the VVSD motto, "Heart Before The Mind." Also a resident in Bolingbrook, Angie cultivates a positive relationship between the school and the community. She orchestrates an annual holiday giving project that assists families in need during the holiday season as well as supports employment in Bolingbrook by sharing opportunities for students such as babysitting, yard work, or directing others to local businesses that she and her family frequent themselves. As referenced by her many titles, Angie is also instrumental within the walls of the building. Starting with her passion for Spanish, Angie has proven to be more than just a Spanish teacher for many of her students. She has acted as a counselor, parent away from home, and mentor to numerous students throughout the years, guiding them through difficult times, helping them apply for college, lending a nonjudgmental ear, tutoring or cheering them on at all kinds of school, in and out of school events. Angie also wears these hats with her staff on a daily basis. One of the teachers nominating her specifically shared, "One of the reasons why I love my job is because I have Angie along my side." Angie constantly seeks innovative ways to engage staff and for, ways for them to challenge themselves. For example, her regular use of Pear Deck inspired so many staff members to try it that 10 of VHS staff received a free premium membership due to their high level of usage. She is a leader among the department chairs in the building and be, can be counted on to regularly present professional development in district for staff and even outside of the district at regional and national conferences. Her contribution to the profession of education is truly profound. And lastly, it must not be ignored that Angie also has three children, one of them up front, under the age of eight. How she's able to accomplish everything I've described and still maintain a work-life balance is extraordinary. She's not only an exemplary member of the VHS team, but also an excellent role model in the community. Our students and staff are lucky to have her. Congratulations, Angie.
Next, we have the Illinois State Scholars, the Romeoville High School. Principal Mr. Kinder. VHS? Oh, sorry. Looks like VHS is first.
Thank you. Tonight, we will be recognizing 75 wonderful students for obtaining an Illinois State Scholar Award. The selection of this prestigious award is based on student academic performance after six semesters and standardized test scores. Congratulations to the following Bolingbrook High School students who have recently been named as Illinois State Scholars by the Illinois Student Assistance Commission. Bolingbrook High School is pleased to recognize the following students for their outstanding academic achievement. And we do have 75 students who've earned this award. About a third of them are here tonight, and I'm going to go ahead and call out their names, and we have some certificates to present them with. Isma Ali. Christopher Bavaro. Sarah Bauheis. Louis Chavez. Congratulations. Michael Edwards. Jaden Flores. Ronald Gonzalez. Megan Huffnave. Claire Jaskowiak. Janil Javier. Azalea Leo. Lizeth Massias. Alyssa Millar. Nicole Moreno. Sumrana Nazib. Emily Ing. Nicole Nunez. Jenna Panega. Kayla Perry. Milencio Sinadad. Techara Thomas. Angelo Valino. And last but not least, Keegan Walgren.
Okay. Now we have the Romeoville Illinois State Scholars. Mr. Kinder, please.
Thank you, President Pro Tem Zack, members of the Board, Dr. Mitchum, Senior Leadership, members of the audience. First, very large congratulations going to Bolingbrook High School and all their Illinois State Scholars. And just a special thank you to the Board for recognizing all of the state scholars from Illinois and through Valley View for, for all of these years and most definitely for this year. Romeoville High School is pleased to announce that we have 39 state scholars, 16 of which that we have here with us tonight. The first one we have is Benedict Ostriaco. Riley Boyet. Michael Casseres. Michaela Dwyer. Elizabeth Hermosello. Abigail Izagiri. Titiani Johnson. Kaitlin Jones. Catherine Kerwin. Catherine Kirwin. Ashley Pitt. Daniel Spatz. Nathaniel Stokes. And last but definitely not least, Malik Tifa. Thank you, scholars, and thank you, members of the community and members of the board. Thank you.
Go ahead, Debbie. Okay. Last week, we had our committee meeting for the handbook. All schools will be looking at current handbooks that they have and determining whether they need to make any changes. They will delete or add items, so those can be handed in and we can get the handbooks started. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Debbie. Anybody from the right? Nope. Okay. Audience participation. Is there anyone that would like to address the board? If so, please state your name, and remember that due to the time restraints, you have five minutes.
My name is Mike Lawler. I'm honored to serve as the president of the Valley View Educational and Enrichment Foundation. Next to me is Rachel Delamorte. She's our vice president. We have a few of our foundation board members on the dais tonight, Diane Perro and Deb Sikora. Let me make sure I'm not missing anybody else. Okay. So, we've got the annual dinner coming up on Friday, March 2nd. It's a week earlier than last year. Came here to talk about the theme and give some, I think it's important to give some clothing advice, what outfits to wear and things like that. And I also wanted to give you some indication of the food that we'll be having, so you can enjoy the evening. It is casual again this year. I'll go with the food first. This is typical food that you might see at a tailgate. We made this out in the parking lot while you were in session. Some ribs and macaroni and coleslaw, but that's not what we're going to be serving at the dinner. We're recreating the experience in the dorm. So, all of you who enjoyed the college food, or maybe didn't enjoy it, we've got higher grade quality than you may have had in your dorms, but it is going to be several stations of food. We're not doing any plated meals this year. It's attacked the different food stations, and it'll be very well-prepared by the Bolingbrook Golf Club. The event starts at 6:30 on Friday night. The reason, the other important reason Rachel is here is she is the one who's handling the reservations. So, you need to tell her how many tables you need for all of your family and friends. Not how many people are coming, how many tables of 10 that you will be filling to help enjoy the dinner. There are, we're working on several wonderful auction items, including trips and, you know, sports memorabilia and things from the local area restaurants and all kinds of great things, and some school donations as well. We're getting donations from each of the schools. So, it is a casual evening, hence my attire. I did want to give, you know, you can have, I'm representing my hometown tonight, not my school, but, you know, you can have some things like this. You don't have to bring any of this. You can, if you want to, bring your favorite cup that you would enjoy beverages in. But let's talk about the various dress options you could have. In colder weather, and it's been cold, we're not sure what the temperature's going to be, but you could wear something like this. This, again, represents University of Notre Dame, my hometown. You could wear something like this. I was gonna, I'm going to save you the time within the five minutes. I'm not going to be able to get this on and off in five minutes. So, we'll just set that. And, you know, you could also do something like this, you know, put some attire that goes with the school, you know, maybe a favorite hat. Notre Dame, they wear this, you know, on colder days and, you know, dress up like that. You can also go a little more casual and just go, you know, another hat that you could wear. It's allowed inside the building at the golf club. Lastly, if you're representing the University of Notre Dame, everyone knows that you, and I'm not careful now, I'm not going to go too crazy. I'm just going to pull this up because I'm not going to be able to take it off while I'm here, but you have to have Notre Dame's annual shirt, and this is from last year. So, several clothing options available to you. You can represent a school that's a favorite of yours, or you can represent the school that you want to. We have several activities planned, all casual. We've got a great DJ. Dr. Mitchum, I think we're expecting you, you had some special attire that you wore in college, more for sports-related, so we're looking for what you wore at DePaul. Maybe you want to bring that along. You can show it to us sometime throughout the evening. How long were the shorts back then?
They would be considered Spankies.
Okay. That's what I thought.
And you can forget about me fitting into my college jersey. That's just not going to happen.
Okay. Well, we thought we'd give it a shot. I've lost the opportunity to fit, obviously, this doesn't fit me very well, so the years haven't been kind. So, that's, I'm trying to stay within five minutes, but again, you can go to the foundation website, vveef.org, and place your reservation on that site, and there's also, I think, a link on the school district website. Or email Rachel Delamorte. So, Delamorte?
It's Delamorte-A-R.
Delamorte, yeah, okay. Look her up in the admin section, the staff section at the administration center. Email titles are a little challenging sometimes. So, why are we doing this? Well, here's a challenge. Last year, we received 43 grant requests requesting $46,000, and we used the funds from this annual dinner and then our golf outing on June 7th this year to fund the upcoming school year. So, what we raised at the dinner and the golf outing, and we tried to raise other money to cover the grant requests for the upcoming school year. We went out and did a little bit of marketing, but I think the word of mouth is back. So, now we have, for this upcoming school year, 79 grant requests up from 43 and requesting over $83,000 up from $46,000. So, find your wealthy friends, maybe loan them some college gear, and get to the golf club on Friday, March 2nd, and we'll have a great time. Any questions at all? 6:00 PM registration opens, and then we'll start the program around 7 o'clock. But 6:00 PM for gathering. Oh, we do have some very special activities. Can I give that up, or do we want to wait? In the spirit of the event, we're going to have Battle of the Bands. So, Romeo Ville High School and Bolingbrook High School bands are going to be, no? What? Only Bolingbrook, sorry. All, that's the musical. We usually end up having the dinner on one of the high school nights. So, Battle of the Bands with the fight songs from each of the schools, and we'll have a special contest to that. So, thanks to Amy Rupstas and the bands at Bolingbrook High School, and Bob Hanerhoff and all the others who are involved. So, come enjoy that, and then 7 o'clock, we'll start the program. Any other, anything else I forgot? Questions?
No. Thank you, Mike. Thank you, Rachel.
Thank you. I'll take the food out of the room because I saw the signs. Okay, I'll leave it here.
Yes, Mr. Zach, I'd like to ask that the board approves student due process cases A and B as presented.
Second.
Any questions or discussions? Seeing none, hearing none? Roll call vote, please.
Member Perro? Yes. Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
No.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Zach?
Action Report, Ms. Kinder?
Yes, sir. Action Report 11.1 is seeking the approval of the board for the adoption of a new course, Advanced Placement, commonly known as AP, Studio Art. At the previous board meeting, we presented the background, purpose, description, as well as the course objectives, and we are seeking your approval this evening.
Second.
Any questions or discussion?
I have a question. Are art teachers teaching this class?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay, and I guess I want to ask, like, how much of it is computerized and how much of it is it structured and is there leadership by the teacher, or is it more of an independent type course?
Well, it is an advanced-level art course, so like our honors portfolio, students do work at different paces and they have their own, they do require support by the teacher, but it is really self-directed. There is a structure in terms of what is expected of the students in the development, so the students will select a medium, and so that could be 2D or 3D drawing, or ceramics, for example. And then the students will go through the whole process of developing their art and writing about their art and revising their art. They are required to submit a certain number of entries to the college board, and so there is a similar process that all the students follow, but given that it's art and students' talents are unique and different, there will be a variety of products that the students do produce, but they have the same expectations in terms of the in-depth nature of the work that they're engaging in.
Yeah, my concerns are just that there is a lot of structure to it, where there's guidance, and it's not where you're just, I would think with art, you're going to need that guidance from the teacher, and it's not just what's on the computer and just let the students are just let go on their own, that there's a lot of support from the teacher.
There most definitely is a lot of support from the teacher, just like we have now in our portfolio classes. Our teachers work very closely with students, not just on the logistical, you know, things of completing a project, but very much on the technical skill and the technique that is involved. So, our teachers are working one-on-one with the students a great deal. That's how the students continue to develop and grow and meet those high-level standards for the course. It's not computer-based. It is an art course where students are drawing or creating the visual representations through the medium that they've selected. So, if they're doing ceramics, for example, it requires a great deal of guidance and direction and direct instruction, support, facilitation, feedback by the teacher. It is very much, you know, something that the kids require the teacher's support for.
Okay, thank you. Could I have a roll call vote, please?
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
Yes.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Zach?
Okay. 11.2, Action Report. We're seeking two policies for approval. These are 210, School District Governance, and 760, the policy regarding residence.
Any discussion or questions? A motion, please.
Second.
Any discussion or questions? Hearing none, seeing none? Roll call vote, please.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
This is 13.1.
This is 11.2, board policies.
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Zach?
Action Report, Human Resources. Ms. Hawks, please.
Thank you. Action Report this evening, 13.1 is the Consolidated Action Report for Certified and Classified Personnel. We're seeking your approval on 29 items for certified personnel, 40 for classified personnel, one for classified administrative personnel, and three certified administrative personnel.
So moved.
Any discussions or questions? Seeing none, hearing none? Roll call vote, please.
Member Gilbo?
Epstein.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Zach?
Before moving on to my next action report, I would just like to bring to your attention that the board just approved two administrative approvals for positions, and so tonight, due to the retirement of Mrs. Eugenia Harvath at Oakview Elementary School, she's the assistant principal, the board has just approved Mrs. Kathy Nygro as the new assistant principal for the 1819 school year. Kathy, if you'd like to stand. We know that she's going to be a great support to Mr. Penziak and all the staff and the students at Oakview. We want to say congratulations, Kathy. And then, second, the board just approved Dr. Judy Nash's assignment as my replacement upon my retirement, June 30th this year. And Dr. Nash was assistant principal at BJ Ward. She was a coordinator for the Professional Development Department. She also served as a building rep for the Valley View Council, and then currently as the Director of Professional Development. We know that she's going to bring a lot of new things and a lot of great things to this position, so we want to welcome Judy. And if you'd like to come to the podium and greet us, let's congratulate her.
Good evening, President Protem Zach, ladies and gentlemen of the Board of Education, senior administration, Valley View staff and community. First, I'd like to just thank you for this tremendous opportunity. It is no secret that with accepting this position, I have some huge shoes to fill. Sharon Hawks is one of a kind and someone whose knowledge and perspective I have respected since I started in Valley View back in 2004. I am also humbled and overwhelmed by the well wishes and encouragement from colleagues throughout the district. Every day, I consider myself very blessed to be here as a member of the Valley View family. I am excited, though, to get started in this new capacity so that we can continue our work moving forward. Valley View is such a great place to be, and it is filled with individuals who give their all to ensure our students have an optimal learning environment in which to learn and grow. I am privileged to have had the opportunity to work with and learn from so many over the last 14 years, and I look forward to continuing the partnerships that we have forged as we progress in the future. So, thank you very much again.
So, moving on to my second action report this evening, 13.2. Resolution Number 1803, we're requesting that the board authorize the dismissal of educational support personnel employee for reasons other than reduction in force.
So moved. Second.
Any discussions or questions? Seeing none, hearing none? Roll call vote, please.
Member Campbell?
Yes.
Member Beduris?
Yes.
Member Perro?
Yes.
Member Gilbo?
Epstein.
Secretary Sikora?
Yes.
President Protem Zach?
Superintendent's Information Report, Mr. Gersafi, 14.1.
Yes, I've got three information reports, beginning with the Nutrition Services kitchen equipment. Just informing you that we are out to bid on four separate school replacement equipment, both JR Tibbet Elementary, as well as Oakview Elementary. We are out for serving line replacements, both of which are original to the building. Jamie McGee, we're looking to replace a walk-in freezer that is about 32 years old, and stainless steel kitchen work tables at Brooks Middle School, which will allow for a more efficient workflow for the 15 Nutrition Services Department employees that work there. So, those bids are out. We'll be bringing those to you at the March 26th board meeting, and all of the costs associated with these improvements are currently budgeted in the fiscal year 18 Nutrition Services budget. Questions on that? Romeo Ville High School office renovation, the next phase for the improvements at Romeo Ville High School include the renovation of the main office and adjacent entry locations. These will- These will create a new secured entrance located on the east side of the campus, which was planned for with the prior site renovations and signalized entrance from Route 53. That east entrance, known as Door 11, will become the main arrival point for visitors in the community. Will consist of new doors, vestibules, and sidewalks, and provide a locked entrance with a security guard station. These designs are the result of several months of in-depth discussions and planning with Romeoville High School Administration. It's our intent to obtain construction bids and bring an action report with a recommendation for approval at a March meeting. Construction will begin in the summer of 2018 with completion during the fall semester. Funding for the project would be included in the operations and maintenance budget. There are some renderings included in the packet, so hopefully you had a chance to look at those. Questions on that?
Yeah, I do. The Registrar's Office and the Vault, I was just wondering, is that moved? Is that going to be moved to a different area?
I don't know. Yes, Mike is nodding his head yes.
Huh. So, Mike, maybe the Vault, is that a, like, how is that built? Is that a, built like a vault? Is that going to be tough to do?
Actually, the room construction will be constructed out of normal materials. If you're talking about the safe area, will actually be a safe that's going to get relocated to that space. But the, but the construction itself will be a normal type of masonry wall construction that's secured.
Is the Vault now, like, not a normal room?
Yeah, no, Sally, just, I think the assumption of it's called the Vault is nothing more than just a cinder-blocked wall, and then with a double reinforced door that goes in place that holds the safe in the middle. I think we've always just referred to it as the Vault at Romeoville High School, but it's really nothing more than just a masonry-blocked wall with coverings on the outside that go inside.
Okay, and then I have another question, too. I was looking at the new Dean's area, and I saw that it's going to be behind the Nurses' Office. It kind of looks like between the Counselor's Office and the Nurses' Office, kind of in that area. And I was just wondering where the kids that are waiting to go in the Dean's Office will be sitting, because it kind of looks like they'll be sitting where the kids that are going to the Nurses' Office will be sitting. And it looks like there's a corner there, and I know when kids are going to the Dean, sometimes they're not the happiest. And I'm just wondering if it's like an area where it can be supervised, because it kind of looks like there's no adult desks in that area.
Yeah, if you, if you notice just from the renderings that are there, Member Gilbo, you are correct that the, they will be sitting, the students entering into the Student Service Wing will be entering in the old Nurses' Office Wing. The new entrance into the Nurses' Office is going to be entering from the main hallway. So, there is going to be a door that is there that blocks off from the main hallway, so you'll actually have to transition through a new vestibule, a new doorway coming into the, to the Student Service Wing. And both the Student Service Secretarial Support Staff and the Dean's Office Secretarial Support Staff will be there, kind of positioned to be the receptionist of the office, kind of like what we have now currently in our Dean's Office, where our two secretaries sit there currently, along with the Dean's being present there as well. From the drawings, I don't know if they're changed on what was presented to you, but the Counselor's Wing has been changed with the Nurses or with the Dean's Office Wing. So, the Dean's Office will be correct, right there behind where you're, where you're seeing it set.
The Dean's Office will be right behind the Nurses' Office, or you'll go through the Counselor's Office to get to the Dean's Office?
No, we've, we've changed that. The Guidance Office is on the interior where the old Vault is, and the Dean's Office is going to be on the outside. We met with our Guidance Office teams, and with the sheer size of the new offices being about 35 to 45 square foot larger than the Dean's Office, and the amount of paperwork that the Guidance Office team would need, and also the amount of chairs when they're having a self-interest assessment or situation, or a health situation that they have to evaluate and have two adults in the room with a student, we decided to go with a larger footprint of the office for the Guidance Office team, moving them inside and moving the small, Dean's to the smaller offices closer to the entrance coming in. And that was after conversing with them about the layout and everything, on how it went through.
So, I guess my concern is the kids that are going into the Dean's Office. You're saying there is a desk where somebody can see them, because it kind of looks like it's around the corner?
Yeah, it's, you would be able to have a straight vantage viewpoint right down where that old glass wall is. There's two office positions there. So, the students would have, be greeted, in a sense, by having to come in. We're looking into, actually, Member Gilbo, to have a kiosk, like an iPad or some sort of sign-in station, that the students would be, have the ownership of going in and typing their name in to, once they arrive into the Dean's Office, instead of signing in like the, the older way, and then also having an alerting system to each of the Dean's and the Counselors, where it's automated to know that they have a student waiting in the office when they come in. So, all of that responsibility wouldn't fall onto the secretaries themselves, alerting a support staff to know that the student is there to see them, but also just letting them alert that they have a student outside waiting for them as well.
Yeah, and on the last page of, the last page of the renderings, there's a couple renderings that do show those reception areas, both at the front office and the Guidance Area.
And currently, those two are Susie Diaz and Kathy Smith. Both have been with us for a while, for, in those offices.
Last Information Report is regarding the Bolingbrook High School Athletic Storage Building. On December 11th, we presented an information report regarding the above- referenced storage building. The Board at that time had requested further evaluation of the project to consider a larger facility that would address future growth, in addition to current needs for storing athletic equipment. Currently, storage space is extremely inadequate, with equipment being stored outdoors under the bleachers all year round, exposing to weather and diminishing the life expectancy of the long and high jump pads. The existing storage room at the north end of the stadium is stacked with football and track equipment, creating difficulty in moving the equipment safely to the fields. Additionally, due to lack of space, one of the team rooms located in the stadium building is used as a storeroom, rendering non-functional for athletic and PE instruction. The inability to use these team rooms prevents functions such as freshman-sophomore football locker room and a girls' designated team room equivalent to the boys' varsity football team room. Housing these activities in the stadium building, like varsity football, would also reduce foot traffic and wear and tear on the existing building facilities, such as the football, fieldhouse flooring, and school locker rooms. So, after further consultation with Bolingbrook High's Athletic Director, the proposed storage building size has been increased from 1,200 to 1,900 square feet. Our intent is to publicly bid the project in March and bring an action report with bid results and recommendations for approval at an April board meeting. We're likely to begin construction in the spring of 2018 with completion during the summer, funding which has been included in the operations and maintenance budget.
Thank you, Gary. 14.4?
Yes, 14, oh, I'm sorry.
I have 14.4. Information Report 14.4 is presenting information regarding the adoption of two senior-level high school social studies courses. This is AP Microeconomics and AP Macroeconomics. These are Advanced Placement courses for the 2018-2019 school year. The rationale for recommending these courses is to continue to expose our senior students to additional academically rigorous introductory college-level courses. And this, of course, maximizes not only their achievement on advanced placement curriculum and assessment to earn college credit, but it also supports the development of critical thinking and problem-solving skills, which is necessary for success in future economic classes in college and in life beyond. We currently offer five Advanced Placement courses in our Social Studies Department. By adding AP Micro and AP Macroeconomics, we can provide students with an additional, with additional AP options to ensure that they have options all four years, beginning with their freshman year with Human Geography, AP Human Geography, and having options every year thereafter. AP Microeconomics is focused on a thorough understanding of the principles of economics that apply to the functions of individual decision-makers, both the consumers and the producers, within the economic system. The primary emphasis of this course is on the nature and functions of product markets. Includes the study of factor markets and the role of government in promoting greater efficiency and equality in the economy. Advanced-level reading and writing are required. AP Macroeconomics is designed to give students an understanding of the principles of economics that apply to the economic system as a whole. In this course, there's a particular emphasis on the aggregate, supply and demand, economic indicators, business cycle, government intervention, and the global economy. In addition, advanced reading and writing are required. So, the information report details more information regarding these courses, and if you have questions, we'd be happy to answer them, or I can connect you with our Social Studies Leader. I see Mr. Merrick sitting in the audience, and I also see our Director of 612 Literacy and Social Studies as well. So, we'd be happy to support through Rachel Schlechter or Chuck Merrick as well.
I have a question. As I went through both of the courses, I noticed that the course goals and the topics of content are the same for both? Identical, as are the required reading is the same for both? The course objectives are the same for both, and one of the books is the same for both. So, does, can a student take both courses? Being everything, so much is, being like even the required reading, so if I took one and then took the other, I've already done the required reading? Or is that maybe a misprint? I don't know.
Let me confirm. I know the two courses, they, of course, interrelate, but as I just shared, there are, they talk, there's a different focus in each of the courses. So, some of the resources may be similar. The approach and focus that we take when using the resources is what would be different, depending if we are looking at the macro or the micro lens. So, let me confirm regarding the course objectives in particular, and I will ensure that that is presented as it is intended.
Okay. Because I went into the College Board AP Micro and, the micro and the macro course descriptions to January 2017, and that's where I got the information. And I was just curious as to why there's so much the same, even the required reading, as to why a student would need to take both, just...
Okay.
Do you have more to add, Mrs. Schlechter?
Would most students take both of them, or just one or the other?
Some students, if they have an interest, they would take both. Some may only end up taking one. If they have room on, you know, senior-level electives, they most certainly could.
Good evening. I'm thinking what might have occurred, and I apologize for this, we'll look back at our information report, is originally, we were going to have it as one course, where students would enroll and take both the macro and micro. And then, after discussion, doing some research about local school districts and how we could run the course, we did decide to separate them, so we can look back. There are a lot of similarities between both course objectives, but there are some slight differences, so I'd want to make sure that you have that correct information.
I'd just like to add that the reason that we separated the courses is to offer greater freedom to students and their scheduling, instead of locking them into a year-long course. It is two separate AP tests, so students do have the option to enroll in both. But currently, the way we have it is, micro will be offered first semester, because it offers a base for the macro class, which then is offered second semester. In the future, after we get it running, obviously, we hope to offer them both, both semesters. But to get started, we're going to offer micro first and then macro second semester.
So, Chuck, do you see my concern, though, that if the required reading is the same for both classes? You know, if a child takes first semester, they've already done the required reading, so why would they do it again second semester?
I can't speak to the required reading that was in there, but the textbook that is used for most of the classes of most of the schools that do it currently is the same textbook.
That makes sense.
Yeah, it's just, obviously, different principles.
Right.
Yeah, different parts of the course. But there is, you know, I think there was, like Rachel said, I think there was an issue with the copy, because the, the courses are definitely two separate courses. They're laid out, obviously, by the AP College Board as such, and two separate AP tests.
So, if you could look at that?
Absolutely.
Yeah, we will definitely ensure that that is clarified when we bring that back for action, so thank you for bringing that to our attention.
Any other questions? 14.5, please.
Yes, 14.5, Board of Education Meeting Schedule for 2018-2019. Posted for your information is the proposed 2018-2019 Board of Education Meeting Schedule for your review and consideration. If there are no concerns, the meeting schedule will be brought for action at the next board meeting.
Thank you, Dr. Mitchum. Legal Service, any report?
No report.
AFT, any report?
No report.
Valley View Council, any report?
No report.
Valley View Office Personnel Council, any report? No report, thank you. Any old business from the Board? Any new business from the Board? Any questions from the public on the actions that we have taken tonight? Any announcements from the Board? Any announcements from the Administration?
No announcement.
Any announcements from the public? Could I have a motion to adjourn?
Sommow. Second.
Roll call vote, please. No. Nope? All those in favor say aye. Thank you for attending tonight's meeting.